Brian.
Um.
Hi.
Oh, I thought you said, where is Brian?
Um.
John, just want to verify that you can hear us.
I can hear you. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, we got you loud and clear. Thank you.
All right, good deal. I'm, I'm sitting in a car with my phone. I usually do this at my computer, so we'll see how this goes.
I'm sure you'll knock it out of the park.
Okay.
I'll now call to order the June ninth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shaila, may we please have our call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Witt.
Here.
Mr. Kohoff.
Here.
Mr. Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll calls complete.
All right, thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and our first item is approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the today's agenda as written.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes for the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five regular meeting along with the meeting minutes for the June third, twenty twenty five special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under six, public comments and communications is six A, public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda today, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to item six B, Elder Abuse Awareness Month Proclamation. Mary with D VAC, perfect.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Cookson. I'm the victim advocate for D VAC. I'm here to read the Elder Abuse Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas according to the National Council on Aging, one in ten seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic or sexual violence, financial exploitation, and neglect. Whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men, and are usually family members, caregivers, health care workers, or other trusted individuals. And due to the same shame, fear, and other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get the help they need. And whereas elders throughout the United States lose an estimated two point nine billion dollars or more annually due to elder financial abuse, and twenty eight point three billion dollars annually due to financial exploitation, such as the illegal taking, misuse, or concealment of funds, property, or assets of a senior or another's benefit. And whereas, whereas too often elder abuse treatment threatens the livelihood of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential and increases their risk of death by three hundred percent compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. And whereas Abilene's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings. And whereas we all have a responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable and older adults, and must work toward ending elder abuse by assisting victims and assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of elder abuse. And now we're just asking that the board reclaim the month of June, Elder Abuse Awareness Month.
All right, thank you very much. Would you want to come around and take a picture?
I would if somebody would take one.
Sure. We have. How good is Ray on the camera?
He's good. He can.
All right, and that was our last item under heading six, Public Comments and Communications. We'll next, or now move into section seven, under Business Items. First up is seven A, Interim City Manager Candidate Discussion, John Deardoff, L K M. Floor's yours, sir.
Now, good afternoon, everybody. Good to be with you again. I didn't know how you want to go about this, but let me just kind of, kind of give you an idea. You know, we had, you, you had the one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven names that were submitted to you from another firm. And I did check all those out, and I'll just kind of run down the list if, if you want me to do that, but none of them really are available for different reasons. Some are currently working full-time, some are doing interim work right now, and a couple others just weren't, you know, just weren't interested. So, Mayor, do you want me to talk about each one of them, or just move on to a couple that might be?
I, everyone was provided the list by city attorney.
Okay.
Through me, so we've got the, the ones that weren't interested at least.
Okay. Yeah, you've got all that. That's good. So, and I will say all of them are good, good folks, good candidates. It's just that they're all busy or just retired. So the couples that I think are interested pending more conversation, there's a couple ways to look at it. Michael Webb, he, he retired about sixteen years ago out of City of Edwardsville up in Kansas City, thirty-five plus years of municipal government. Well-respected in city and with his colleagues up in that region. And he does have an interest, although he's got commitments that would prevent him from being able to start until sometime early August. And so, you know, we talked about the option last time of, you know, me doing a couple months and then maybe transitioning to another one and how, you know, maybe that's not perfect. So that's an option. The second option is an individual that retired, and some of you all may know him, but he's from that area, from Russell. And he retired a couple year, about a year and a half ago, and is currently doing some consulting work in his own. It's called Midwest Municipal Solutions. So he's doing a little bit of work for, you know, several cities, just contracts that he has. But he did indicate that he would be interested in talking more about an option there in Abilene if that, if, if you would want to do that. So, you know, just to summarize all that, there's really, you know, what I've come up with is just a couple options, and that was having a couple people over that period, or if, if John is available and you guys are comfortable with him, then I suspect he would be in for the hall, for the long haul. He did say that, you know, three to, three and a half days a week would work for him, probably not more than that, so that's something to think about as well. So, so that's really, you know, as I said earlier, interims are hard to find, really, and then the duration you're talking about makes it a little more challenging as well, and I, and certainly understand due to the elections, and so certainly understand why you're doing that, so. But let me address any questions that anybody might have.
I don't believe I caught the name of the second individual.
Uh, John Quinde. Q, Q U I N D A Y. Quinde.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any questions for John Deardoff on any of, either of those two candidates? Potential candidates, I should say?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, sorry. No questions for me. Just kind of, it's really, it falls in our court as the commission to decide. Kind of what I'm generally thinking is we get the contact information of both those, and each of us can reach out individually to them, have a conversation, and then we meet up again for another special meeting and make our decision either into this week or early next week. It's kind of.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was, I guess that's the framework I had in mind as well, because I know we'll probably want to make contact with both of them and just talk to them. We don't want to make the decision right here without having, you know, having conversation with them, so. Does that sound okay to the rest of the commission?
Good to me. I'm okay with that.
John, would you be able to send that contact information for each one of them for
Yes.
Michael and John over to?
Yes, I, yeah, I'll get that probably later tonight or first thing in the morning. I'll send it to you, Mayor. Just their, their telephone numbers and kind of go from there.
Okay, no, that'd be perfect and all. As soon as I get it, I will relay that city attorney Martin and have him send it out to the rest of the commission as well. That way we can all, I'll have that information and and then, do you guys have any preference on special meeting times if we get that information sent out first thing in the morning?
I'm checking my calendar here. Do you want to try to pin something down while we're all sitting here?
Think it might be helpful.
While, while you're doing that, just a question so I, so they know what to expect. Are you talking about all of you making individual calls, or one of you, or how, how, how are you thinking about that, just so they know?
I, I would foresee that, you know, each one of us, if we'd like to, we can contact them.
Okay, no problem.
I know I'm, I know I checked before, just kind of figuring out timing. I'm checking my calendar, and I know Wednesday, Wednesday, anytime in the afternoon, evening works, and then Thursday I'm good until I've got another meeting at seven that I have to be at, so. And Friday is pretty much out.
You're talking this week?
Yeah.
Thursday works, Wednesday doesn't work for me.
Okay.
I could do Wednesday or Thursday. Yeah.
Thursday looks good.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Uh, Thursday, four or five? Preference?
After four is good for me.
Meet in the middle. Oh. Director Molden? I forget, we have to, uh.
Um, Ladies Literary League meets here from three thirty to five in this room Thursday.
Okay.
I'm trying to pull up the rest of the calendar, but that room would be available, but this room would be.
Twenty to five?
Two, five. That works. Do they usually run over, or?
Not usually.
Okay.
Um, I was just, I'm just trying to pull it up so I can check. Make sure no one's scheduled after that, but. Yeah, they should, five, after five should be good, five and after.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let's shoot for Thursday, the twelfth, at five.
Yeah.
Thank you. That. Everyone good with that? Yeah, and John Moore on the, I guess, technical side of it, with at least one of the candidates being, you know, having his own consulting firm. I don't know, you know, I guess I've never been through contracting out interims. So may need some guidance on that as well, unless city attorney Martin, have you been involved in those contract drafting?
I believe I've been involved in one instance with the City of Abilene where we contracted with an interim, and I was trying to find the contract, but I'm sure I can find it if it exists and use it as a template, but I also expect Mr. Deardoff may be able to help us out there, too.
Yeah.
So we'll have options.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help you with the draft of contract if you get to that point. So, yeah, and I would also add that, you know, after you've talked with these individuals, if you've got any other questions for me, I'd be happy to talk to whoever about that, too, so.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Do we have any further questions for John while he's on? Okay, thank you very much. Enjoy your, enjoy your meeting in Sabatha.
I will. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
You bet.
With no action following, under item seven B, I will move into item seven C, Consider Approval of Resolution Number zero six, zero nine, two, five, dash, one, Resolution Authorizing and Providing for Improvements Included in the Multi-Year Capital Improvement Plan for the City of Abilene, Kansas, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof. Dominic Eck with Gilmore and Bell.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me again this, this evening. Dominic with Gilmore and Bell Bond Counsel to the city. So tonight we just have the two resolutions that we discussed during the previous report session. The first would authorize borrowings for the three proposed projects, and the second one would start the process of preparing the necessary documentation to hold a sale of the city's temporary notes to fund those three projects. Those notes would ultimately be taken out following construction and following receipt of any obtained grants by a bond issue and after maturity those notes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Dominic on this item?
About hearing questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion, motion to approve Resolution Number zero six, zero nine, two, five, dash, one.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Yeah, I'm not going to hold my tongue here on this one either. I think everybody on the commission knows exactly where I stand. I think spending a million dollars for five blocks for stuff that we don't know we need is frankly bankrupt, and the process that we've gone through to get here, I believe is just as broken. Uh, we're, there's three thousand households in Abilene. We're going to saddle each of them with three thousand dollars per household to dig up something that we don't know is broken. And so we've got eight hundred thousand dollars we can use to fix our streets, but instead we're going to pull another one point one million dollars to maybe fix some stuff underground. I guarantee you the money's going to get spent. I've, you've seen it on every single other project. Every last dime has been spent. And so I'm not in favor of this. I will be fully in favor of a bond that removes the one point one million dollars for the five blocks of, of who knows what that we don't need. We don't know if we need in downtown Abilene. We know we need our, our streets resurfaced. We've got eight hundred thousand dollars in grants. That's going to, our portion of that is going to be eighty thousand dollars. It's a ninety percent match. We got an email from, I believe it was Mr. Royer here earlier today, explaining the need for that, and I think if anybody has driven down Buckeye recently, they would agree with him, frankly. I think those roads severely need to be resurfaced. You know, that's that's needed. That's absolutely needed. We don't need to saddle our taxpayers with a million dollars of questionable underground work, three hundred thousand of which is in engineering. It's not even going towards any actual infrastructure. So I'm not going to vote for this. If my fellow commissioners are amenable to removing the one point nine million dollar portion of it, I'm all in favor of it. I think we need to get the industrial part going. I think that's going to be a really positive thing. That'll help push the city forward, and obviously we've got the funding mechanism for the ballpark or the multipurpose fields. So I think that's, that's another exciting thing for our city. Spending three thousand dollars per household for, for who knows what is not responsible. That's not what we're here to do. That's not good service to our citizens.
Do we have any further commission discussion on this item? I'll just reiterate my points behind fixing the underground stormwater drainage systems while the road is tore up, and also fixing any of the sidewalks that are busted up and needing repaired at that same time. Um, I think, like I said, if, if you are going to do it, and we won't know until we get down underneath that, that road layer, I think it's, I think it's very intelligent to do that while the road is, is tore up. So that's, I've said that before, but.
The resurfacing doesn't require us to tear up the road. We'll resurface the road again in five years or ten years. We can figure out in the meantime if we actually need to do that work. We don't have the money. That's the reason we're going to the bond. The city does not have the money. And we're going to have to figure out here in a few months how to pay for that bond. It's just irresponsible.
Any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote Commissioner Kohoff?
Nay.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven D, Consider Approval of Resolution Number zero six, zero nine, two, five, dash, two, Resolution Authorizing the Offering for Sale of General Obligation Temporary Note Series twenty twenty five of the City of Abilene, Kansas. Dominic Eck with Gilmore and Bell again.
Yeah, so this is the second resolution that will direct staff, our firm's bond counsel and the city's financial advisor, Piper Sandler, to move forward with the steps necessary to market the temporary notes.
Any questions for Dominic on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number zero six, zero nine, two, five, dash, two.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote? Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven E, Consider Approval of Ordinance Number two, five, dash, three, four, six, zero, and Ordinance Amending Section three, dash, two, zero, one of the City Code of the City of Abilene, Kansas, Concerning Definitions Applicable to Regulating Alcoholic Liquor in the City of Abilene, Kansas. City Clerk Moore?
Mayor Commissioners, this is the ordinance we spoke about at the study session. It is adding the term railway cars to the definition of drinking establishments to get it in line with state statute.
Any questions for City Clerk Moore on this?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number two, five, dash, three, four, six, zero.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven F, Consider Approval of a Bid from Foley Equipment for the Purchase of a Caterpillar two fifty-five C T L D C A two Skidsteer in the Amount of sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents for the Public Works Department. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. We're back here revisiting after the package last week that you were given for a new skid steer for the Public Works Department. The one item that I was questioned on, I do have an answer on. On the Foley Cat sheet, instead of a listed part, they actually sell their buckets according to a part number specifically, and the reason that is, and by the way, there is a, a part number listed on here. We did confirm that. But they sell a lot of extra buckets that aren't necessarily associated with the skid steer itself when it comes to a contractor or anyone wanting a second bucket for whatever reason. So that particular item is listed differently on the sheet. We are still recommending that we go with the overall low bid from Foley Cat out of Salina for a price of sixty-nine thousand, five seventy-nine, sixty-one. So any other questions on that?
Can you point that out to me on the, I think about the bid sheet up here?
I can, I can hear.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
So it, it stands for the width?
Seventy-four inches.
Smooth, yes, correct.
Okay.
That's their coding system.
Any further questions?
No, no question.
Any further questions for Public Works Director Anderson?
Thank you.
What is our local purchase allowance?
Five percent. I had the calculations written on the study session one couple weeks ago, but I didn't put it on this one.
Yeah, it's off. It's more than ten percent, I think, or about ten percent.
Yeah, I, I, well, I don't know the percentage, but I did have the breakdown of the five percent, so. The difference, even if you took in the So the difference, even if you took in the 5%, that was a difference of still strong on the strong side is $720 and 39 cents.
Thank you.
Further questions for Public Works Director Anderson on that item?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Foley Equipment for the purchase of a skid steer in the amount of $69,579 and 61 cents for the Public Works Department.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is seven G. Consider approval of a lease purchase agreement with global global environmental products for a global M three street sweeper for the Public Works Department through Sourcewell with financing through First Bank in the amount of 67,225 per year for five years. Public Works Director Anderson.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. We're here revisiting the last meeting of the Global Street Sweeper. As mentioned, we utilize Sourcewell for to help us find everything that we wanted. So that their information came back to us with just a couple of vendors really in the region. We utilized them and two local, not local, but funding sources were given as part of their Sourcewell agreement. NCL Government Capital and First Bank, not First Bank Kansas locally. But this would be a lease to purchase for a new M three sweeper. Originally purchased price of the unit was 307,517. We're looking at doing this on a five-year plan that equals to 67,225 dollars a year. All the funding will come out of our equipment reserve. So any other questions on that?
Did you get clarification on the interest rate on that?
I I did not get clarification on that.
Apologize if this was in the packet or already discussed, but one thing that I just was thinking about is if this does get approved, when would delivery of the equipment happen? Just acknowledging the fact that our hurt ones eventually broke down.
We've been kind of given a hint that if something were happened today, that they could possibly have one here in 30 days or so, which would be phenomenal. And FYI for you, we're still waiting on parts for the second that our unit that we still currently have. And so currently still no street sweeping taking place, which we are in dire need of.
Any further questions for Public Works Director Anderson on this item?
Not on this items, I guess specifically, but with street sweepers, it seems like the plan is just to run these for five years. And essentially, once we pay them off, we get a new one. I guess I'd like to maybe look at a plan that involves maintaining those a little bit better so we can go for a few years without payments.
Sure. And and in my opinion, they we do a lot of maintenance on it, and you almost have to just because of the conditions that they're put through. Fall is really hard on them units with all the leaves on the ground. We just simply run through a lot, and it gets a lot run through the machine. Natural wear will wear out the drum inside the sweeper units. I know even since I've been here in the last couple of years, we replaced a sweeper attachment broom attachments on that thing at least three times, and it just gets used that much. So.
Is there a better management plan for leaves? I mean, that we can maybe prevent running them through this machine?
Well, if we had one, I mean, it's not very feasible to run it through our back truck either and and have unnecessary wear on that. Generally, not not a really good plan, to be honest with you. When they come down, they come down, and we've all seen it. They just kind of sit there in the gutter pans. And until we make our effort, we've physically went out and cleaned drainage boxes, and we do it almost after every rain. But that's just a hard battle to do in the in the thick of the fall season.
This may come off. I don't know the ins and outs of this, so it may come off as a very stupid comment. But with the timing of that delivery in 30 days, obviously, we know the everything started to pile up a little bit in the guttering now. If we do get it fixed, it may, like I said, I don't I'm not in your in your world, so I'll defer to you. But it makes sense to, you know, utilize that existing street sweeper to really hit that harder. That way it takes the brunt of the.
Definitely, we're we're the ultimate goal is to get the still get the one fixed, no matter what the situation that you decide here today. Because we can delay selling it a little bit if we need to, just to kind of get caught back up and utilize it. But we're also playing the game where we absolutely we get something fixed up and it's ready to go. And and what could be the next thing that goes wrong with it again? So and we ultimately want to have it in as best shape as we can to to make it a sellable unit where we can get the most return out of it also.
Right. Further questions for Public Works Director Anderson on this item?
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease purchase agreement with Global Environmental Products for a global M three street sweeper for the Public Works Department through Sourcewell with financing through First Bank in the amount of 67,225 dollars per year for five years.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Just a third disclaimer. First Bank is not the First Bank Kansas on my paychecks. So just to be overly clear. Any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is seven H. Consider approval of a master agreement work order with Olson for engineering services for the industrial park project in the amount of 338,850. City Manager Marsh.
Commissioners, this is the master agreement with Olson for the industrial park infrastructure improvements that we talked about last week in the amount of 338,850.
Any questions for staff? I know Mark with Olson is here as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the work order with Olson Engineering for services for the industrial park in the amount of 300,000 338,850.
And I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I'll just let you know I'm going to be voting against this because it did not go out for bid. We have processes in place for these to go out to bid. In fact, there's work that I think we're discussing on our study session today from a that went out to bid through Olson to another engineering firm. And so I think that's the responsible way to use our taxpayer dollars. So I'll be voting against it for that reason.
Do we have any further commission discussion?
I also believe this isn't in our budget as far as that goes, so we're spending money we don't have. Just add that on.
It's included in the industrial park funding.
We don't have the money. It's not in our budget for 2025.
Do we have any further commission discussion?
I'm looking over the the notes. We'll we'll have about 30%. Is that right? About $100,000 that we'll be responsible for. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question for City Attorney Martin. Are we even allowed to do any work if we're bonding all this out before those bonds are issued?
I noticed that Mr. Eck is still on the call, so I'll let him chime in if he has any different thoughts. I pulled up our master agreement with Olson, and we included a cash basis compliance provision in there as we often do anytime a contract spans multiple budget years. As you know, the city is subject to cash basis laws, and we cannot encumber funds for future budget years without having the funds actually on hand and set aside. In this case, I recognize the city is planning to use the bond proceeds to fund all or a portion of this project. The question, however, is as of today, can we enter into this contract and bind the city? It's my opinion that we can on the basis of our nonappropriation provision included within the master services agreement at section 7.17. In the event that the city were to choose not to budget for this project, that gives the city a legal out, and it can nullify and terminate the contract and not bind itself to future budget years. I also expect that the city has appropriated its entire general fund for expenditures this budget year and any costs incurred prior to the issuance of the bonds. You could spend funds from other sources if they've been appropriated through the budget process. That being said, I'll look to Finance Director Mr. Eck if he has any different thoughts. But I am comfortable with entering into this agreement today without regard to any cash basis concerns. So yes.
Mr. Eck, are you still with us? Dominic, are you still on? Apparently not. Do we have any further questions on this item?
Can you resolve the you're talking state statute and then the master service agreement? Can you resolve the discrepancy between the two?
Sure. What I'm referring to is, as as you may recall, the city has a master services agreement with Olson that establishes the general terms and conditions of any arrangement with them. And then on a project by project basis, Olson will provide a what do we call it? A statement of work, a work order that then sets forth the specifics of that project, what exactly scope of their work will be will will consist of. And it doesn't contain any of the terms and conditions because those are already set forth in the master services agreement. And so this work order will be subject to the master services agreement that was last entered into. I believe it was in December of 2024.
And what I'm looking for is a resolution between that and the statute that says we can't encumber funds or we can't spend funds that we don't have. I guess that's really my my concern.
Well, that that is there whether we say it or not. But typically, when we enter into contracts that I anticipate will span more than one budget year, I will ask that language to be included. And it just gets the other party's recognition that we are subject to cash basis. And if they are attempting to bind us to a contract that spans more than one year, they are recognizing in writing. And again, that's true whether we put it in there or not. But I like to put it in there so that there's a clear paper trail that we have reserved that right. To my knowledge, the city has never used that as a sword to get out of a contract. But if you were to choose to not budget funds for that in a future year after having entered into this contract, you would have the legal basis to cancel it without liability to the city. You would not owe Olson anything for those future budget years that were not appropriated.
How about this budget year? How are we? What's our basis for spending money that's not in our 2025 budget?
I will look to the Finance Director. My understanding is that the entire general fund is appropriated annually for any and all expenses. That gives the city the legal ability to spend them. Doesn't mean you have to, but the funds are appropriated within the budget so that in the event a decision is made to spend those, we don't have a cash basis concern because they have been appropriated. I'm not involved in that process, but that has been my historical understanding, and that is what I expect we would find.
But we can only spend those monies for what they have been appropriated for. So since we didn't actually appropriate any money for this project in 2025, we're we're essentially going off of our budget to be able to do that.
I don't know if I agree with that, but I if I could have just a minute, I might be able to answer your question.
Okay.
That does apply to certain funds, but not for the general fund, and that's where these have come from.
I'm looking for the original budget to see if I can help shed some light on that, and I just haven't found it yet.
While we're waiting, do we have any questions not directed towards City Attorney Martin?
Maybe this is a question for the Finance Director. Where are those? I mean, my understanding is that we allocated all of our funds in the general fund already for 2025. So what are we reorganizing to to be able to pay this bill?
Since we'll have the money in hopefully September, since we just approved those resolutions. We have discussed it. We will not be make. We don't have to make any payments on the engineering until after that time. So we will have received that money in from the bond sale, and that's what we'll use to pay for 101,000 or whatever. We won't be all of 101 in this year. But we we do have some engineering funds budgeted that we can take if necessary, we can take it out of there until we get such the sale of the bond and then reimburse that particular fund or that particular line item. But within the general budget, you can you can shift line item to line item. You don't have to. It's not specifically for that. I mean, you don't have to use it specifically for that line item. Now, there's there are funds that that's you can't shift between funds. And that's one of the fundamentals of municipal finances, understand the difference between funds and line items and what you can and can't shift between. So.
Do you have a clear idea of where this is where these funds are being shifted from?
So like City Manager Marsh just stated, it would probably come out of the engineering line items that we have set aside money in several different funds and departments for.
Do you have those balances? Are we extending ourselves in that?
If we have to pull them out of those line items, which I don't anticipate that we're going to, but if we have to pull them out of those line items, those line items will be reimbursed, so we won't overextend ourselves for the end of the year.
Reimbursed utilizing the
Correct, using using the bond funds, the funds from the bond sale, yes.
So there's two reimbursements that we're looking at here, really, the KDOT funds and the the bond funds. My question is really. My question is really, we're gonna have to spend the $300,000 before we can get reimbursed. Mr. Basham, I don't know if you can tell us what you anticipate needing this year? Or services? That might help our finance director understand where her budgets are gonna land.
Commissioner, I'm just going off the top of my head. But I would say it's probably going to be less than half for this year. Because part of that is for bidding, part of that is for the construction administration and stuff like that, which will happen after the first of the year. All the work to be completed this year would be actually in getting rid, the plans ready for design and get out to bid after the first of the year.
So 170 would be roughly.
Probably 150, yeah, 100, yeah.
Thank you.
I apologize to try to resolve this publicly, but do we have an approximate amount of our general fund? Am I correct that it's about 7.4 million? Okay, so I'm looking at the 2025 budget and I know we amended that, so I need to probably track down the amended one. But for example, in the budget certificate submitted to the clerk of Dickinson County. When we certify our budget, we appear to have appropriated the entire balance of the general fund equal to 7,470,000 dollars, 304, 7,470,341 dollars. And again, that is not obligating the city to spend it. It is appropriating it. So that the city is positioned to utilize it in the event that is, an expenditure comes up that you approve. And that's what I was referring to when I believe that we annually, as is customary, I believe, appropriate the full balance of the general fund. But the anticipated expenditures are set forth, you know, elsewhere in the actual budget. But for appropriation purposes, I think you have legal authority to spend up to the amount of the fund balance that was appropriated in the budget. And so long as we haven't committed that to other uses already this year, I'm comfortable entering into this contract, particularly since we have that cash basis language in the Olson master services agreement that allows the city to opt out of it in the event that we ever choose not to appropriate for a future budget year.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at our general fund here and finance director, maybe you can help me out, but for engineering, we have $5,000 in the 2025 budget, at least in the workbook here in the general fund. It's exactly, and I'm sorry, that's just the first fund I've come across here. So I want to make sure that between the other funds, we're still compliant. And again, I'm not sure if this is what was finally approved, but in streets and alleys, there's zero dollars in that fund.
If you look at our special streets fund, we have 165,000 for engineering and that's where we could, if we need to, we don't again, anything we take out of there will go back and it will be reimbursed, it will be reimbursed, but that is where we could take it out of if we need to.
Is that what was budgeted or is that what's available?
That's what's a budget and available.
Any further questions for staff on this item?
Still got a motion and second on.
Sure. Seeing no further commission discussion, I will move to roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Nay.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is eight under section eight, items for discussion, item eight A, update regarding wastewater treatment plant repairs, Public Works Director Anderson.
Once again, good afternoon, commissioners. We're just kind of putting this back on the radar again a little bit. If you remember late last summer, we started discussing some menu, some issues with the wastewater treatment plant with some settling in the pit room. Just as a brief reminder of the steps that were taken, we we made contact with BG Consultants in July of 24. We entered into agreement and did a structural assessment report with them in September of 24. And then we actually did a consult, consultant client agreement March 10th of this year, and then we had a kickoff meeting. So just to let you know where we're at now. They went out and started gathering all their information. They had a 50, we had a 50% meeting so that we knew the steps that were taking place on May 8th. About a month, about three weeks later. We had a 90% submittal so that we're getting further into the steps of them finding out what's technically going wrong. And we've got a pretty good sense of what has happened now. And actually, this, this week on Thursday, we're supposed to be getting our final submission meeting on their total report. And I, I won't go through it all with you at this point, but they've been pretty thorough with providing us a, an up to date book. A set of plans, but basically what it comes down to, just so you remember, we, we kind of had three options at the time. Engineers' opinion and probable cost, if you kind of remember that discussion, I know it's been a while. But we looked at just doing some very bare, bare minimum stuff and the estimated cost at that time was 58,320, 58,320. We then looked at the cost to do the repairs with a techno, geotechnical investigation, stabilizing that, that pump room. And just taking care of the problem where that room specifically. And that estimated cost at that time was 181,778. And then we did a worst case scenario, which we honestly felt wasn't necessary to do the whole entire building, which was 523,000. So back to where we're at now at this point. We're, just so you know, TerraCon was involved and what TerraCon does is they come out and do some core drilling down into the base. And the submission of the whole report after they took measurements and shots of the whole building is that the building was actually doing the settling and the pit wasn't necessarily moving. They went down to the depth of 40 feet and drilled and came up with some information that we're gonna be looking at using helical pile on the wall that we're having the issue with. Ultimately, the helical pile, it will be determined based on the TerraCon report of how deep we're physically gonna need to go. But the ultimate hope is that, one, it's going to be stabilized, and I think that will happen. We're drilling down in the, the old river valley down in there. So finding a solid rock to hit on, who knows how much deeper we'd have to go. If you were to find a, a rock, obviously, as you're drilling down, rock would stabilize, put pressure back on and potentially lift. They're being honest and don't think that, that we're gonna be able to lift the building back. But they are very sure that it's gonna stabilize the building and keep it from doing anything more than it's doing. There's a whole plan set of the helical pile on how many feet apart they're gonna be to go in and stabilize. There's some on the outside of the building and then some on the interior part, which is gonna be a little bit more in depth in the actual pit room. That process will take drilling down in, obviously removing some concrete, drilling in, putting the helical pile in, getting stabilization. And then they can foam back underneath the form to kind of level and solid everything back up in a nutshell. So it's a, it's been a very interesting process to see how their architecture design has came through with all this. Our, our plan of attack, just so you know, and the reason we wanted to just kind of bring it back to the light a little bit is, is once once they get their submittal back to us. We're looking at being able to wrap up that portion of the agreement within a week or two. And then we're we're gonna be able to start entering a bidding phase. And that, that process, we're, they're scheduling for a three to four week advertisement. They work with a lot of specialists that do this. That's their job is to go in and stabilize buildings. So having a pre-bid conference, having individual companies come out, physically visit the site. Figure out how they want to do it and then having a deadline to turn in their sealed bids. We're, we're hoping to get all these steps taken care of and have sealed bids back around approximately the first of August, somewhere in that timeframe. So we'll come to you with what the findings and the, and the results are and basically try and get approval to move forward with the repairs on this. The only other thing I can think of is that I don't, I would sure like to hope so, but we have a new predicted original estimate that is a little bit less than what they put out in their original. So, and we're talking like 152, so things can always change when them bids come in from the actual companies, but we will wait and see how that, that takes place. Any other real questions about the whole process or where we're at? Like I said, it's something that we need to get taken care of. We need to stabilize this. It's putting pressure on some of the, the pipes to the sewer plant. Not so much that we're in critical danger right now, but we don't want this to continue to happen.
I know we discussed this when this first came to the commission, but we want that kind of mid-tier option that we think will take care of what we need. But just that, I guess, just making a point, that does also include the corrections that were included in that low tier of surface sealing and all of that.
That's correct, yes. They have plans for some of the cracking and the repair. So not only will they be fixing the floor, but they'll be fixing some walls that have anywhere from, from minimal cracking in it. With like a composite or an epoxy and to the more significant ones. And the most important thing is, is the foaming and leveling back up of the floor. So it's a, it's a win slash lose because our pit is not, doesn't seem to be moving, which is a good thing. I don't know what this process would be if that was, but, but if we can stabilize the building, I think we're heading in the right direction. Okay, well, more to come in the future, I guess.
Okay. Have any questions for Public Works Director Anderson?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our next item is nine A, City Manager's Report. City Manager Marsh.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The fire department has received a $20,367 in Department of Interior grant for a turnkey, excuse me, turnkey skid unit, and there is no match, so they will, that was a great job on their part. And that's all I have for this meeting. Stand for any questions?
Have any questions for City Manager Marsh? Seeing none, our next item is a recess.
Good with moving right into study session? All right, I'll make a motion to recess a regular meeting and start our study session right away.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, a mood roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Right.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in recess. Well, now a call to order, the June 9th, 2025, City of Abilene, Kansas, City Commission Study Session. Our one and only item is item two A, discussion regarding rebuilding of T hangars at the Abilene Municipal Airport. City Manager Marsh.
Commissioners, excuse me, commissioners, at the May 5th, 2025 Airport Advisory Board Meeting, the board approved recommending the construction of an eight-place T hangar with full pave for the governing body to consider. This will start the rebuilding process for the hangars destroyed in a windstorm. Both six and eight hangar concepts, along with full pave and partial pave for each, as well as the cost estimates are included in your packet. Brian Combs with Olson will be, is on Zoom today to answer any questions I'll let, and I'll turn it over to him to walk through this with you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Marsh. And Mayor and Commissioners, can you hear me okay this evening?
Yep, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Good to see you all again. Exactly. So, so following up, you know, I think it was discussed and asked here at this meeting. As part of our contract, we stated, you know, we'd be designing the six place, but we wanted to evaluate the potential for an eight place. So that's the phase that we're in right now is evaluating those concepts and those were presented to the board. Part of what we also need to discuss tonight. Those cost estimates on the board are somewhat of a oversimplification for comparison purposes. So if you recall, there's a few different funding streams flowing into this project. There's your, your insurance money, a KDOT grant, and then some FAA funds as well. So I have a little more detailed picture on that as well. But you can see, we did look at options for comparison of a six-place hangar with a full paved approach. A six-place hangar with individual paved approaches to each door and then as well as those same two configurations for an eight-place hangar. In that estimate that was looked at with the board, the eight-place units are actually smaller door widths as compared to what was looked at for the six-place units. And ultimately, the board's opinion was that being able to accommodate more of the types of aircraft that, that use this facility with the smaller units, but more of them was desirable. And that is, I think, a, you know, a high level summary of, of the discussion that went into that. So happy to answer any questions in general about those concepts you've seen there in front of you. And then, like I said, I will show you a little more detailed funding picture as well to go along with those. So any, any questions for me or specific questions on what you're looking at?
Questions for Brian? You said you spoke with the board, is that the airport board that you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
Are these going in the place where the ones were blown down?
Yes, exactly in that same place and the existing, the building that was destroyed had space for 10 units. But really those it just as standard building practices and sizes have changed over the years. Can't really fit a 10-place structure in that location using today's sizes. So eight is the largest that, that we can, that we can fit.
What are the remnant spaces used for the, like the half Ts on either end?
Those are, those would be storage for airport use. There's different ways that you can figure those, but that was what the board thought would be best utilized for those two spaces. As opposed to combining them in with units.
Is it possible to put 10 units there or at another place on the airport?
That's a good question. It's not possible to put 10 units in the location that we are evaluating, which is where the old structure was blown down. Or I should say. Yeah, I think I can confidently say it, it literally won't fit with a minimum size that, that utilizes now in other locations. There are some locations shown for future hangar development on your master plan. They come with some floodplain implications and a lot of additional taxi lane infrastructure that isn't in place, so it would it would greatly expand the cost to look at, you know, putting a 10-place unit in a different location than, than where the existing building was destroyed. If it's helpful, I could show you a Google Earth picture of where that existing structure was blown down.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. Did you discuss the potential of doing a ten-unit? At a different location with the airport board?
Whoops, sorry. Um, I did not, actually. Um. But that is something that we could revisit before we got way deep in design, but um. Again, I think that that would, opinion is that would really uh. Really increase the project budget. So are you able to see my screen? Yeah, I can see it on the.
Yes, we are.
So this is the location of the old structure that was destroyed. Um. So there's a couple of items with this. We are maintaining, you know, object-free clearances around these existing taxi lanes that exist. Today, so those are still intact and in good shape, so we don't need to reconstruct or touch any of this pavement that wraps around the hanger buildings. These um little individual approaches would come out. There's not much foundation where that building was, but the other item that we're. Trying to balance is um current building codes only allow you to get so close to adjacent buildings without fire suppression, which isn't really available on that location, so. Been working with the building code official as well to make sure we're complying with that, but. So we have to maintain a little bit more separation um. Between this existing building that remained in our new building, um which is limiting us to that eight-place configuration as well.
What is the setback requirement for fire code?
Fifty feet, you can space it fifty feet with no um ramifications. You can get up to twenty-five feet with the implementation of a firewall. So that was the configuration that the board elected to explore in order if we don't um. If we limit ourselves to fifty feet with no firewall, then we can only fit a six-place hanger. In that location.
I don't, I don't know if you have the um packet pulled up, but it had some good, I guess, overview renderings. Okay, yep, you do have it pulled up.
And I can, I've got those on my as well that I can share if.
So that's what I relied upon.
You did.
Yeah. It's helpful to visualize it all.
Yeah, so so with that aerial in mind, here shows you the six-place option in which we maintained fifty feet and granted, these are six units with a bigger door. And. This is the eight-place option, so these are six-foot narrower doors, but the board believed they would still serve the aviation community and stakeholders at our airport. But then reducing that clearance to thirty-five feet from fifty, which would require a firewall on this adjacent side.
What's the setback that's required on the south side there for the taxi lane? Is there a requirement there?
Thirty-nine point five feet from center line. Which is this uh. This line that's labeled with this acronym that stands for Taxi Lane Object-Free Area, so you can see that wrapping around. Um, so we, so we've kind of minimized that space right there, available between the end of the proposed building and that object-free area.
What is the actual setback? Do you know? Looks like it might be eighty feet.
The distance from here to the center line?
Um, to the south end of the building, so from the. You've got that thirty-nine point five feet marked, which is your required setback. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, from here to here. Yes. Are you asking what is this remaining distance right here?
Okay, I guess I'm looking at the thirty-nine point five on either side of that loop there, if you will, and I guess. Is that the setback line or is that a different setback line that's thirty-nine point five feet from the center line?
Yeah, so the minimum required clearance is thirty-nine point five feet from the center of the taxi lane. To the, to the, to any obstruction. And then that thirty-nine point five feet is also required from the center line of this. To any obstruction here as well. We just didn't dimension that one. We should have added that on there, but that. Is also thirty-nine point five.
And when looking at uh, I know the airport wants to maximize their. Hangar spaces. Um, when I was looking at it, my preference and thoughts were to with the multiple funding sources and and largely by sources, not City of Abilene. Um, I would, my my preference was to do the the eight-hanger with full pave to maximize that drawdown from FAA funds.
I agree.
I will state that I don't really have a preference. I think it really goes to the airport board for what they want, but I do want to make sure that we're maximizing the. Resources that we have available if we're going to do a one-time project. And have multiple sources of funding for it. I think we should maximize that and get the best result. I don't know. I'm just, I'm looking at this picture, Brian, and this might be a dumb question, but where you have taxi lanes all the way around the facility. Could you delete the taxi lane on the south side? I realize there's probably some implications for that, but if you wanted to put ten or maybe even. More uh units in there. Could you remove that as an official taxi lane to to accommodate that and, you know, what would the ramifications of that be? I mean, you've got both, I mean, it looks like there's taxi lanes that go to the north on either side.
Yeah, if you give me one second, I'm actually trying to find your. Airport layout plan. So this is a set of drawings. It's called your airport layout plan. It's kind of a. Two components to your master plan. This is like the engineering plan set, then you have an additional um narrative document that goes along with this, so let's uh. I'll show you. What your terminal area plan looks like, if you can bear with me for a second. So this is showing potential future development. Um. We, I suppose that we did not evaluate um. Removing this taxi lane and not providing a connection across here. Um. It's something we could look at if that, if the budget was available to extend this to a ten-place hanger, so maybe it would be, I. Perhaps jumped the gun. Now north is up on this map. Sorry, I should have done that to start, um but this will now match what we were looking at on Google Earth in those exhibits, so. This is showing the building that existed, so this airport layout plan was published before this old hanger was destroyed, so keep that in mind. Um, but we did, we did not, in full disclosure, we did not evaluate an option of essentially removing this. Piece of taxi lane connection and adding two more bays down. Um, if we wanted to re-establish that connection around, then that would be, you know, additional taxi lane. Paving costs that were not um considered in the original project budget, but if we thought there was room to um. Increase the project budget, then that is certainly something that we could look at. Um. And we we may need to have a conversation with the FAA from a planning standpoint to see if they would allow us to expand the footprint of that project, if there's any other. Um. Environmental or planning considerations that they may uh. Require us to evaluate, but um. It's certainly something that we could explore if there was a desire there. Um.
Looking at what you have on your screen there, are the units on the east side, are those all intended to be private? Is that, were they individual on the?
I don't know, so uh. Even if they're quote-unquote. Private, if they're on airport property, you still maintain control over them via lease or or some sort, so. I'll, I'll state that, I suppose, but I would say more so these are just intended to be. Um, an individual box hanger, so a little bit of a bigger use. Um. A little bit of a bigger aircraft could fit in there besides a historical single-engine GA. Um, so you could set those up to be city-funded or privately funded, you know, via lease, et cetera. There's, there's lots of different ways that these could be implemented, but typically. That shape and configuration is meant to be for a little bigger individualized use as opposed to a tea hanger storage.
Just looking at your diagram here, would it make sense? Maybe uh I think there's definitely some utility in keeping that taxi lane as it is, but would it make sense just to potentially build. A ten-unit hanger, kind of where you have U eleven designated there? Um, and then kind of, I guess it kind of gives us a little bit of flexibility on that main building. I know that that is not a brand-new building. Um, I don't know, I'm looking at our fire chief here. I don't know if if that meets current current codes, but I know there's avgas and all sorts of. Uh, probably fire concerns out there as it is. I think that fire separation in the code is probably there for a good reason. And it might make sense just to push that to the south.
Yeah, I'm, I can't speak uh for necessarily the inside of that building. Obviously, it was built before current fire code. Uh, now, one of the things though that would be. An increased expense, uh we keep getting further out there. We only have one hydrant um right as you pull into the airport. Uh, so that's getting to be a pretty big stretch show. At some point in time, uh as that continues to grow out there. Um, we we will have to put another hydrant further south. Um, it's set up to where we're going to have one to the north. Um, at some point, so uh that that infrastructure is pretty simple, but further south, that will be required at some point, so.
Where is the hydrant right now?
Uh, so right as you pull in um off of Washington Street, um kind of. Oh, the the paved driveway where you pull in, it's just on the south side of that.
Brian, if we were required to extend the hydrant, would that be an allowable cost? And I guess. Do you know what kind of cost that would be? And I can see, what what's a, what's a desired?
Uh, so Brad, he'd probably have to um answer the the cost of that. Uh, if it is a included expense, that would be something that would uh probably be worthwhile looking into. Um, because it's going to happen at some point. Um, and that's, I don't know the exact footage from where that is to where the end of that new one is, but it's going to be a. It's going to be a stretch, I I would speculate, so.
When you say a stretch, can you explain what you mean by that?
Uh, like over four hundred feet. Um, we we.
You're saying to get a truck, like to actually physically hook a truck up to the hydrant?
Correct, yep.
And I don't know if there's, I mean, that's probably only serving the. Uh, airport. It's not needed for any other city use, right? So if we were to delete that and move it.
Yeah, I know, it would, we would want to keep the current one there as well. Um, and just like that, it should be four hundred feet. Um. Current code is, building shouldn't be four hundred feet unless it's in residential from the fire hydrant.
So it kind of looks like we were, if we were to go that route of moving those new hangars further south, it'd be kind of a. Two pieces of it, you'd have some fire access issues there with the water source, and then you'd also have to. Uh, pay for that additional paving to the south because. You know, as it stands right now with this Google Earth picture that you have pulled up, these do not exist.
I think we're going to redo all that paving anyway, aren't we? Am I, am I misunderstanding that? Oh, you have, you're pulling right onto the taxi line. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, the, there's a significant increase of cost associated with these because um. In all of these options that we considered, the tan and the pink are all that's new construction. This gray is intended to. Remain untouched. It's it's pavement that exists and is in good condition, so extending that further south is a, is a very significant. Cost increase as well as grading with fill associated because that kind of falls off there, so it it is feasible, but that's why I'm saying it. It will significantly increase the budget.
Can you uh speak to the budget and those different funding sources that we will have access to?
Yeah, and that actually may inform um kind of the opinion a little more, so here is generally uh. So this is the funding plan that was put in place, and I think this was included maybe in one of your initial um commission packets, but we've updated this somewhat. Um, so this is the funding plan that was put in place. Before we started any design efforts and this is um. By six to nine months old now at this point, or maybe even older from our CIP of the hanger. Um, so this is the budget number that was plugged in for construction cost, but generally you have a K dot grant. For hanger that I believe is at a fifty-fifty. We're planning to get FY twenty-six FAA funds, which will be at a ninety-five-five split. Um. And then um the budget planned on grabbing. A future year of fiscal year twenty-seven, which would become available spring of calendar year twenty-seven to reimburse an additional. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars um to the project budget at that point. And that would put the resultant local share at approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then if you were to subtract your available insurance money. From that local share, this would be the um out-of-pocket cost, so. That's where I was saying that that ninety-ten representation on those budget estimates wasn't entirely, was 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 an oversimplification from that standpoint of. Kind of a typical FAA-funded project. So if we plug in the cost of the. Projected cost of the eight-place hanger, and we have taken into account, unfortunately, we've seen. Um, we got some more, uh, a couple more hanger projects that bid this bidding season in April of this year. So building prices held relatively steady with what we were estimating, but um some of the paving costs have continued to go up. Um, particularly concrete pavement. Um, we saw that on one hanger just recently in Beloit. Um. But if we plug in the projected CIP construction cost from the eight-place option, the preferred option. It adds about two hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand over um. What was plugged into that budget formula at the um. At that design phase, so that increases that resulting out-of-pocket share to this. Um. And that's after the insurance uh funds are used, so. An option that could be explored, if that is what we wanted to pursue, um could be to uh. Approach K dot to see if there is additional um grant funds available or look at the FAA of grabbing an additional future. FY twenty-eight year as well, which we think is included in their authorization. Um, but that would be extending that project timeline or that project funding timeline out, so. Um. So that's the. That's a more accurate um. Representation based on all of your funding streams, K dot FAA. Insurance funds and local funds.
I know that um I think probably most of the members of the commission here remember we signed some funds over to Pittsburgh, I believe, a few years ago. Or a project. Is there any possibility of other airports having FAA funds available that they would sign over to us?
Unfortunately, um, so that's a good process if you are participating in that. Um. When those get transferred over, um. They typically happen on projects that are not what the FAA considers revenue generating projects, so um. That happens quite commonly on runway, taxiway, lighting, navigational aid projects. Um. FAA considers fuel projects, hanger projects, what they call revenue generating, meaning that once it's complete, it generates revenue for your facility. Um, and so they they typically do not provide transfers to cover shortfalls on those projects, unfortunately.
Any further questions for Brian on this item?
I guess I'll just kind of reiterate my my thought process here. I think. Um, while I like the twenty thousand dollar out-of-pocket uh number. I think by going to the south there, you kind of give yourself plenty of room to grow. Um, I did happen to pull up that fire log. It looks like it's more than four hundred feet from the existing building even, so I think it would. Would make sense to look at including some additional fire safety. Um, in that project. If we're uh, if we're looking at that regardless of where it goes. Um, but I guess I would just, yeah, maybe Brian to give you the homework you suggested, maybe reach out to K dot or. The FAA either one and see if there is additional funding that would. The FAA either one and see if there is additional funding that would. Allow for that. I think that kind of gives us. Kind of the ability to add on as needed. I don't know how much of an issue the distance between the existing. Uh, kind of main building and the hangars is. Um, I'm sure that's probably nice to have that twenty-five feet away or whatever was suggested there, but. Um. I can see a need maybe in the near future to upgrade that building as well. Is the, is the airport budget being used specifically for this or is it general fund?
Well, the airport budget does come out of general funds, so um, but we're, there will be some, obviously some of the general fund airport budget. Being used for this, but most of it is going to be covered by grants and insurance.
I think that's probably a question for the airport board as much as it is the commission, how they want to use the funds that are allocated to them.
Absolutely, and that's what, that's why we brought this, but ultimately. It's your decision as the governing body of the city of Abilene to decide how to spend that money for, they're just an advisory board. Remember, they're not, they don't make the financial decisions, but. I did ask them to be here tonight and I don't know why we don't have anybody, but maybe next in two weeks they'll be here, so.
Yeah.
Can you clarify, Forrest, just uh, I think Brian, you kind of touched on this, but exactly. What the ninety-ten match is, what the cap on that is, as well as the fifty-fifty from KDOT?
Yes, I can help with that. So. These bottom numbers on this chart, and I can send this to um. I can send these two scenarios to, to Ron following the meeting so that you'll have them to study between now and your next. Commission meeting, but the amount of your KDOT grant. As we understand it is um. Was the same as your insurance funds, this two thirty-three forty-one, and it was used at a fifty fifty uh. Fifty fifty is the current KDOT grant program for hanger development. And your federal funds available um, this seven hundred and fifty thousand is added up from these different um. Fiscal years that we've been building up after the current projects that are happening um. Which is how we get to that seven hundred and fifty. Historically, FAA funding has been at a ninety-ten split. Um, the. FAA reauthorization bill that was passed. Last year changed to the funding split for FY twenty-five and twenty-six only to a ninety-five five um. So um. Impact some projects in your case where your local share kind of exceeds that five percent um. Really that total seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount. And then this hundred and fifty thousand is your future. FY twenty-seven year that we were talking about pulling in um. So those are, this is the total of those three pots. KDOT funds. FAA funds that'll be available next spring. One year of future FAA funds, and then this summary down here is how we add up. To the currently available, I say currently, the FAA funds that will be available um, next spring.
You mentioned revenue versus non-revenue generating. If we were to um, have to extend concrete, if we were to build to the south there. Would that be something potentially we could get funds from other cities to pay for? If we consider that a runway, kind of like it is now around the previously existing hanger?
Theoretically. Taxi lane extensions. So if you're not paying for, so, so the FAA considers the building and the approach to the building. All as part of the building and the revenue generating project. So the taxi lane, they would consider more like the public street. To use that metaphor where it's public use, uh, multiple people can use it. So. Theoretically um, taxi lanes can be eligible. Or transfers or funds in addition to what you receive with your annual entitlement um. On a practical basis, the current uh. In the current funding scenario with the FAA and for general aviation airports um. They're telling us, you know, they barely have discretionary funds to get beyond runway pavement, runway pavements and lights. So. While theoretically it would be allowable for you to receive additional transfer funds for these on a practical basis. If we talked to the FAA, I'm quite certain that they would tell us you can't plan on receiving anything additional besides your entitlement to cover that, so.
You're saying even from a transfer from another city's entitlement wouldn't be allowed?
Yeah, because, because everybody. You don't get to pick where your, where you transfer your funds. So the, so everybody receives their, the FAA has everybody received their bids. You know, for our state statewide, kind of all in that same timeframe around April, and then they recommend. The high profile project, high priority projects that they see as high priorities for where those transfers can go. So, so you wouldn't really be able, it's not like there's a situation where you could. Ask a neighbor airport to turn theirs over for your project. The FAA is the ones that um. That make those recommendations and, and make that happen. Unfortunately, so.
Yeah, um, hopefully we have somebody from the airport board here next time just to make sure that, as I, as I. Understand it, that um, eight unit there in that location with the full pavement is what their preferred option is. So. Might be good just for them to speak to practically why they would prefer that, so.
And what's going to be on the next meeting will be the vote to provide the direction of which option to move forward with?
Uh, yes, just approving the. Whether it's a six, six hanger full or partial pave, eight hanger full or partial pave, approving that process to start that, get that in motion, yes.
Perfect.
Um, I'm happy to reach out to members of that. Board, but I would be hesitant to make any decisions without them. Giving us their input.
Well, they, we have mechanisms in faith, we have mechanisms, mechanisms in place to get hold of, we'll get, we'll make sure they're fully, fully aware of the meeting.
Okay, anything else on this item? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you, Mayor. I do, since this is my last meeting, I would like to uh, just take a minute. I don't want to waste anybody's time, but. I just want to say thank you to uh, a bunch of people. I want to say thank you to Amy and Wendy um, for the last couple of years. Uh. Just your support, your friendship, and also for checking in on me from time to time when I needed it. Want to say thank you to Trevor and Brandon. We started this, this adventure together and, and I appreciate uh, your support. I appreciate your guidance. Uh, your ability to let me lead and most of all, your friendship, and hopefully that will continue as we move, as, as I move on. I also want to thank the staff and employees uh, of Abilene. Uh, you guys, we couldn't do anything without you, the city itself and, and myself especially. All our successes are we and all the failures are me and you guys just rock it. You absolutely. You could go above and beyond every time I ask you. Um, you've done more than I could have ever hoped you would do. And I think we've done a lot of good things in the last four years and there's so much, so much more to come, and I appreciate everything you do. And I would just like to say, continue doing what you're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for uh, last, just over four years, I guess. So appreciate everything that uh, you've done for the city and, and uh, we've, we've accomplished a lot in a short period of time. Uh, that's. There's, yeah, there's been a lot of moving parts and projects in the last four years and, and uh, I think. Um, I'll speak just for myself, but uh, the city of Abilene is better for, for you being here. So appreciate that.
Yeah, I second those, those comments and uh, most of all, appreciate your resiliency. So um, Salina is lucky to have you. So excited to see what, what work you're able to accomplish there.
Ron, I think I speak on behalf of most of the employees of the city of Abilene and say thank you for your leadership and you will be missed.
Okay. I just forgot. Thanks, Erin. You, you've uh, provided untold legal advice over the last four years and I do appreciate that.
Consider motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, a real call vote. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned.